I have one that I've spotted.
I'm sure, yeah. You take a look and then we'll hear.
Okay.
I'll give you mine.
Yep.
Isn't it same thing as the envelope on there?
Yeah, sure.
Alright, we can call this meeting to order. Uh, everybody, welcome and please join us in the plush. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, glad to have all of you here tonight and we will move on to roll call. Please note, all the members, whoever's are all here. Uh, next we have agenda approval and no additions, I don't believe.
Make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Motion by Bob Woods, second by Scott. Any discussion? In favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Post. Motion passes unanimously. We will move to Mustang spirit recognition. Mr. Nelson, would you like to go first with Mustang spirit?
I can go first.
Why Mr. Nelson?
We're pulling, we're pulling Bree up from elementary and we have conferences tonight, so Lane's gonna go down the court.
Perfect.
Um, by herself, but Bree, you want to stand up? Uh, ours goes to Bree and to Lane for all their hard work. Uh, we've had a number of different things that we've worked hard on this year. Uh, that they've organized, Veterans Day program, our fun run, which we had never done in-house before. Family reading night, what else am I missing?
Just...
Open house, just...
Everything, I'm sure.
Everything. There's days where I'm like, I'm gonna get some work done, I'm gonna get there early, pull up at five forty-five in the morning, Bree's vehicle's there. And days where we say we're gonna stay late and Lane's there until five thirty, six o'clock that night, so. They work incredibly hard and, and we don't say it enough, so we appreciate everything that you do for us. Both of you, thank you. Oh, and last night she was recognized, uh, at St. Cloud, um, for her accomplishments as well for the support staff recognition.
Well deserved and congratulations on that as well and, uh, thanks to both you and Lane and appreciate your commitment and dedication.
Yep.
Thanks, Bree.
And she has to back over.
I gotta go to work.
Alright, Mr. Nelson?
Yes, Nancy, would you mind standing up? Alright, I would like to recognize Nancy Peterson. She has helped us out by volunteering to be our nurse at the Halloween five K for the last several years. Ms. Stevens, would you talk a little more about that?
Um, I think, well, we kinda realized that there was a lot that went into putting in a five K and one of those was like safety, I mean. And so it was fantastic when Lily was like, I bet my grandma will do it and she has come every single year, so it's been fantastic and, um, reminds us that, hey, maybe you need to send somebody out on the course to make sure everybody's fine and, um, takes care of people and is just there and always in a great mood and volunteers and it makes, um, a little bit more legitimate to have a five K with some medical personnel on hand. Molly, did you have?
It was, uh, we just visited for most of the time and it was really fun having another person to talk to.
It was fun for me too, you know, it's fun to really be in a place where the kids are, where they're open and talking and, you know, it's good for my grandmother. Keep my youthful mindset.
And thank you for your professional assistance with my son and so.
That was a hot one.
Yeah, that was super glad you were there and so.
Just a reminder, we are being videotaped tonight, so.
Yeah, right, no, whatever. Yeah.
Share whatever you feel is appropriate.
Yeah, please.
Thank you.
I'll hold it, I'll hold it.
Thank you, Nancy. It's a perfect way to stay connected to the kids, to be part of a lot of those activities and so it's a win-win. Thank you. Um, any other Mustang spirit from either high school or elementary school? Does anybody else have any Mustang spirit? Okay, we will move on then to the first open forum. Is there anybody here that would like to address the board tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to next item, which is a presentation of the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen financial audit. So I will call on Carl Nordquist, Nordquist from Altoff and Alton, or Altoff and Nordquist, excuse me, Carl. Just conveniently drop your name.
Um, good evening, everybody. My name is Carl Nordquist from Altoff and Nordquist. First of all, I'd like to thank you for choosing our firm for this year's annual audit. Um, are there any questions before I do a brief overview of the basic financial statements and then the management trend letter? Okay, on page four on the basic financial statements, this would be the independent auditor's report. And in particular, I'd like to just point out at the top of page four where it says opinions. It says, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, business type activities, each major fund, et cetera. Uh, basically, this is considered a clean audit opinion in layman terms. Uh, we did not have any findings or any issues that we had to bring up to anyone or anywhere, send any letters off or anything like that. So everything looked pretty good. We didn't have any issues or any problems. Uh, anytime I asked Tammy for anything, we got it right away. Uh, everything went well, went quickly, as it should, when everything's in order. So that was the good part. Uh, then starting on a couple pages after that is a management discussion and analysis. And it runs through a variety of various pages until page twelve. I'd just like to point out that some information there, factors bearing on the district's future. Basically, this section is just information written by management to the readers of the financial statement, so they have an idea of what's coming into the future. What the district sees happening, what's going on possibly at the state level and stuff like that. So it is a good idea to read through that. Now then on to page seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. This would be the statement of net position and the statement of activities for the district as a whole. This would mean that this is not fund accounting on the traditional funding counting method. Generally, it's from the funds and then it's all taken to full accrual basis. So in this section, you'll notice that there's capital assets. There's also some other numbers. Now I included a sheet, a little extra on the side sheet that looks like this, because I just wanted to talk about this a little bit. The numbers that are on the beginning balance are the two thousand seventeen numbers on the audit report for the deferred outflows, the net pension liability, and the deferred inflows. Now, these are all numbers that are derived from information that are given to the district and supplied to us from the Teachers Retirement Association and Public Employees Retirement Association. This information is there on the reports, so the readers of the financial statements can have an understanding of what the district's proportional share or proportionate share of the total liability in the future for pension plans. Basically, the pension plan at the state level is a little bit underfunded, about ten or fifteen percent. So this will give you an idea where those numbers are. So you'll notice the net pension liability, the beginning balance started at forty million, the ending balance actually went down to thirty-three million. The bigger change has to do with the deferred outflows at the top, which this section would be considered an asset. So it started out at twenty-four million and dropped all the way down to three point eight million. You can see that Teachers Retirement Association had an adjustment there of twenty-two million. The reason I'm showing this to you is because if you think about it, it, this, these numbers are not on your fund accounting books whatsoever. But on the balance sheet, when you start changing those numbers, then that statement of activities has to change too. So effectively, in that bottom right-hand corner where it says twenty million, basically, you booked approximately twenty million dollars in pension expense this year. And it all has to do with the change of these numbers. There's no place else for it to go. It has to go into either revenue or an expense. So that's why there's a change in the numbers on the next page that look a little different than the last couple of years. I just wanted to make sure I show this to you. Um, as a side note on this, the district has no control over those numbers. That's all put off by the para and terra board. Um, the only control the district has is that the district did make its monthly payments for both of those retirement programs each and every month right on time, just like it was supposed to, which we actually do audit to make sure that it is done because it was part of a pension thing. So, that being said, that part's okay. The question I get quite a bit is, does the district owe this money? The answer would be no. It's all held in trust by the state of Minnesota. And they will make adjustments as they deem necessary going down the road. Um, I did hear recently there's a discussion of possibly raising probably point two-five or something like that, one or, one or both of the contributions. The one concern about that is we all know that if they raise the district's portion of the amount, they will probably never reduce it again. They will move up and down occasionally with everybody else, but the district usually, if they raise the district one, it'll never go down again. So it is something to keep in mind. I have just heard a little rumbling about, I have no idea if that's gonna happen or not.
And just to add on to that, like Carl said, this is not a negotiable rate. Uh, it's set by the legislature. Uh, and it's a, goes from a recommendation from the TRA board and then we're dictated what it, what that rate is going to be. And so we, uh, with the TRA, uh, it's a matching piece and so the amount that's withheld, uh, it's at, what is it now, seven point five percent?
Yes, uh, yeah, seven, seven point five.
Seven and a half. So seven and a half percent of each teacher's wages are withheld each month, as well as then the district matches that with seven and a half percent, and that's the payment and then goes into the TRA piece. So we have no control over that other than we do or do not make the payment, and as Carl said, we've never missed a payment.
And just to put it in perspective, I did get this question here earlier this week at another school district. Well, how bad is it? I mean, they were, it's a small school district and they were looking at their number and it was three or four million, four or five million dollars and they were getting kind of excited. And I said, well, in the grand scheme of things, the state of Minnesota is somewhere around ten or fifteen percent underfunded. Um, the last time I saw the number, which was about a year ago or so, Maryland was eighty-five percent underfunded. Actually, the state of Minnesota be ranked right up there at the top of how well they've handled their pensions. So it is, this is just the governmental accounting standard board wanting the taxpayers to realize what that position is. Because there are other areas in this country where that number would be a lot bigger. Uh, just trying to let everybody know how this situation is. Any questions about that? So, well, we're not even done here, actually. We go to page eighteen and nineteen. And you will see where the expenses start. Uh, the regular instruction is at twenty-nine million. So we move all the way over to two thousand eighteen and seventeen. You can see that it's twenty-eight million versus fifteen million last year. Knowing you would see the big difference in that number and lots of questions, I figured I better cut that off right away and just explain to you what's going on there. Of course, some of that is spread out amongst a couple of the other numbers, but the lion's share, of course, would be in regular instruction because that's where mostly the expense would be. It'd be all in salaries and expenses. So that kind of explains how we start. When we go back to page seventeen, it starts with a net position last year of a negative five million dollars and ends up basically at a net position of negative twenty-three million. And it's directly related, most of the lion's share of it's all the pension, the change in the pension. And I was actually taken back by it. Robert and I were taken back by it. My business partner, we both, uh, got in contact with the terra board, the para board, and then the gentleman from the M D and E to find out what the heck is going on. And every school district's having the same issue. The big surprise, terra was the big one, TRA, that's a pretty big change. So, any questions from there? Okay, then moving on to pages twenty and twenty-one, this would be the balance sheet of all the governmental funds. Um, you can see that, uh, the net fund balance for the general fund is four point five million, which is, uh, twenty-one point four percent, I believe it is. So the district did stay above as twenty percent, uh, fund balance policy. In case you're wondering, um, I get this question every now and again. The four point five million is basically good enough to cover about three and a half months' worth of expenses at your standard expenditure rate.
Which is good business practice, which is why we want to be in that neighborhood.
Yes. Uh, for a school district, it, it can be too high and it definitely can be too low. Uh, once you start to dip below, you get around that ten or fifteen percent, then you start running into problems because, a business owner knows, or generally what happens with most businesses, you get a fairly, not necessarily stable, monthly revenue, but it kind of goes like this. As opposed to the school district, it goes like this and basically it's three times a year, you get lots of money. The rest of the time, you have to make do until the next check, and that's where the problem comes in, because you could run short of funds to cover payroll and items like that. Okay. So then on pages twenty-four and twenty-five, this is the one everybody usually looks at the most, the combined statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. You'll see that the, uh, general fund had nineteen million dollars in revenue and the total governmental activities altogether was twenty-two million, less expenses of thirty-two million, shows a total loss for all the funds of nine point seven. And then, of course, if we look at the building construction fund, you see that's where most of the expenditures were for the eleven million, eleven point one million dollars in expenditures. So therefore, we show that the general fund actually had a slight increase in its fund balance of five hundred and forty-seven thousand. Food service did well again this year at twenty-eight, community service at forty-six. So, based on the numbers, how I look at it, how the district and the size of the district, um, and this fund balance, right now, I would say that the district's in a pretty good spot. Um, well managed, in good shape. There is one thing I wanted to point out. I believe it's on page forty-seven. This is note number twelve, unearned revenue. You would see on the balance sheet, there is a number on there for unearned revenue in the, uh, building and construction fund. And then the, uh, for the building construction fund is related to the prepaid lease from First Light Health Systems for the lease of the wellness center. So the revenue will be realized annually for the lease over the next twenty-four years for a total of twenty-five years, because you already did have some, uh, realization at the end of, uh, June thirtieth of two thousand eighteen. So I just thought we, because that number was in there, we needed to put that in there for the readers of the financial statements. So that fund at the moment does show a loss. So when you look at it, basically, over the course of time, that four point two million that's, um, when we look to page twenty, the four point two million there for the unearned revenue will be gained back as revenue over the next twenty-four years and eventually that fund balance will end up being a positive number. It just will take a while. Just when I was looking at all the stuff and everything, I'd thought, well, we better, you know, with discussion with Tammy and, and Mr. Schultz that we should probably get that footnote in there, uh, just so, you know, it was explainable. And a couple of things I'd just like to point out here. Pension plan footnote has gotten longer and longer. Right on page forty-five would be the capital assets. Just to give you an idea what the, the increases and decreases were in the capital assets. You can see that twenty-seven million dollars were added this year in the new buildings. Uh, fourteen million dollars was deducted and mostly, as you can see, that was the construction in progress, a reduction there. How that works in the accounting world is, uh, generally when you have something under construction, you technically put it in an account called construction in progress, but you don't start depreciating that particular asset or group of assets until it's completed. Then you take it out of that account, put it into appropriate areas where it's supposed to be, then you begin the depreciation over time from there. That's why you have that account, is just so you can keep track of what's going on. So generally, if you have a building, uh, construction project like you had at the school district here where it lasts more than one year, that's how you end up with the construction in progress. And you can take it out of there generally when it's substantially completed. That's the, some accounts like those, that sort of verbiage, I guess, so. So then, starting on page forty-eight and running for multiple pages after that, is the pension plan footnotes. That has to do with Teachers Retirement Association and the Public Employees Retirement Association. Um, if you have not read these, I would go ahead and take at least a little time to read some of it, probably not all at once, if you don't want to. But there is a lot of information in there that is, uh, you kind of need to know, so it kind of makes sense. How they come about trying to decide what the footnote, I mean, what the, uh, information is, how they're gonna put it out, uh, what the tables are, how they're using that, what the interest rates are, uh, what their assumptions are. It's all actuarial accounting, so it gets rather tricky, but it makes sense once you start to get your head wrapped around it. One of the changes they made, um, I believe it was this year, was that they changed the tables that they use for euphemistically called death tables. I believe the, the spouse is now four years longer than the husband. So they, they list it that way, husband and spouse, that's just the way they've always done it, but now the spouse is listed at four years shorter than, the husband is listed four years shorter than the spouse. And then when you look at that, that, of course, changes what the old long-term liability would be, based upon whoever's earning the money and then, of course, the longevity side of it. So then on pages sixty-eight and sixty-nine, this is just some tables, required supplementary information for TRA and PRA, just to give you an idea what the change in the numbers are and what it has been over the last few years. Okay, then, let's see, budget to actual starts a couple pages after that. Actually, on page seventy for the general fund. One of the things I'd like to note is that, based upon the actual total revenue and the final budget for revenues, it came within eight hundred and one thousand. That's really good. And then when you look at the expenditures, the total expenditures basically was over budget by two hundred and twenty-four thousand. So when you start doing the, uh, the math, obviously, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, a rather small per- percentage of the total. So that's, again, excellent budgeting. Keeping control of all the costs. And the last couple items I'd like to point out in this large report would be on page eighty-six and eighty-seven. This is called the scheduled expenditures for federal awards. And the district this year had just over a million sixty-three thousand in federal expenditures. And you can see what the different programs are. Uh, the child nutrition was four hundred and nineteen thousand. Um, title one, part A cluster was three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and then some miscellaneous ones from there. Because the district has more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of expenditures, this is an additional reporting requirement the district has to do. Because I do get that question, why is this even in here? And it's because the federal government wants to know, so we actually have to do some additional procedures and steps, just to make sure the money's being spent in the proper way. Such as we review the pars and stuff like that to make sure the personal activity reports are completed and signed in a timely manner and stuff like that. Any questions? Then the management letter and trend analysis, this is, uh, just give you some graphical representation of some of the numbers. Do laugh at about it once in a while because when I, I mean, what I do, when I look at the numbers, I see the graph. For those of us that don't look at numbers, the graph works better, so we have the graphs.
Thank you.
So you see on the first one on page two, you can see over the last five years with the total ADM served, which is the student population, has been for the last five years. It's been kind of going up and down a little bit. It's pretty much about the same, um, down a little bit. Then we go on to page three, we can see what some of the total revenues are for the general fund sources of revenue only here. But it breaks it down between the property taxes, state sources, and others. It used to be, oh, probably ten years ago, the local property tax number would be decidedly larger than it is now. Then the state revenue number would be a lot smaller, so that, that is the one major change over the last few years. And on page four, kind of gives you all the last five years together in, in gross numbers to show you how the fund balance has been and how it's been progressing over the last five years. Then you can also see in the chart down below how the revenue and expenditures have kind of stayed together over the course of time. All in all, I think the, the district has done a very good job of controlling the expenses and keeping a hold of everything. And then on page five, this is the fund balance and cash investments graph. Every now and again, I have to point out on this one that fund balance and cash are not necessarily the same thing. Just because you have some cash doesn't mean you get to spend the cash, mainly because, as you know, there's liabilities coming at you and things like that. I do get questions about that every now and again, of why we can't take money from here and do this. And as you know, uh, you cannot take any money out of debt service. Everything in the building construction actually has to be spent on the construction. The community service, it all has to stay in there. Actually, I have seen it happen once, in case you were wondering. In community service, when they were actually making too much money in a particular program, I believe it was adult education, had to do with the driving thing, um, teaching adults how to drive. They're doing so well. All the districts were sending them there because they had a really good program. The state requested the money back out of their fund balance. Yes. Because as you know, in, in community service, if you have money for ECFE, that's where it has to be spent, just that. So then this program kept building up so much money, the state finally took it back, because it couldn't spend it anywhere else. Thought that was really nice. So, okay. Does anyone have any questions? If, uh, if after further reading, you have any questions or concerns, uh, please feel free to give me a call. I'll help you out any way I can. Again, I'd like to thank you for choosing our firm. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always nice to have a clean audit and in as understandable terms as is possible for people like me. So, um, yeah, any other comments or questions for Carl before we move on?
Thanks, Tammy, Craig, for working and providing everything to you and, as I said, makes our job as board members a whole lot easier, knowing that we have that there, so.
You know, and Tammy carries the bulk of the load during the audit, uh, preparing and finding and, uh, spot checks and, uh, availabilities. So for that entire week that they're here, she's pretty much at their back and call. As well as then, once they leave, they take the information, they ask questions, and she spends a lot of time, so. Uh, Tammy does put in a lot of time through this process. And, uh, Carl mentioned it just briefly, but I'd also like to point out, uh, again, and just reinforce, that all of these dollars are tracked. Uh, everything is tracked electronically, uh, revenue and expense. As he mentioned, you can't take money from one pot of money and spend it in another place. So construction money cannot be used for maintenance. So construction money cannot be used for maintenance. Uh, the construction money was for a voter-approved, uh, piece, and it was very spelled out, uh, and approved by the Department of Education. And so if there's money left over in an elementary, uh, construction project, it can't be spent on high school maintenance. Uh, that, it just, it can't happen. If it does, then we're in violation, uh, and then we run the risk of losing our license, and we're not interested in doing that. Uh, so we make sure. Ten years ago, fifteen years ago, a lot of this stuff wasn't done, uh, as detailed and tracked as tightly as it was. So if we got to the end of the year on an eighteen million dollar budget, we were within five hundred bucks, we just called it good enough. Now they don't do that any longer. It's so electronically that if we don't round the dollars the right way, they come back after us for a dollar if we're off in any one of those pots of money, so it's tracked very, very tightly.
Carl, is there a train, I mean, this is a very complicated detailed report and appreciate that. Do you, as an accountant, have to get special training to do school, um, audits?
Yes, excellent question, actually. Um, first of all, as a certified public accountant, I am required to keep my license, not getting any kind of trouble, to maintain forty hours every year, which is a full week of classes. And then to do governmental auditing, I also have to maintain within that forty, twenty-four hours every year directly related to governmental auditing. And to take one of those classes, basically it's three days out of five, when you're talking twenty-four hours. It's a very detailed thing, and then of course, doing what I do, because I do single audits as well, I have three school districts that have a single audit. I also make sure I pick up a class or two every year on that. So I generally average about fifty to fifty-five hours every year in classes because forty just isn't enough. Because I also do tax returns once in a while. So in answer to your question, yes, we do actually have to have the training. So then if I were to bring a new staff member per se, um, they do not have to know how to do anything when I walk in the door, but I have to sign off on everything. And then as time goes on, a very short amount of time, they also have to start taking the classes, and then that's how they get to know. So when I first started doing audits, I was under the wing of Marcus Alton. And then of course, from him, I learned how to do it, how not to do things, and then, and then from there, you know, as a CPA, that's just, you know, the stuff we have to do.
And it's, I mean, it's, this is above and beyond what a CPA would normally do as, uh, as a personal, um, accountant. You mean, this, this, uh, most CPAs that don't get the training you have wouldn't be able to fully comprehend what's going on here. So your average person off the street going through these numbers is gonna have a difficult time.
They can, but if they take their time or have some working understanding of how the balance sheet and income statement works together. That's, to me, that's always been the bigger item. It's one of my things, you might say, is that I sometimes wonder why so many people don't understand how a balance sheet works. Because it's important to know just in everyday life. If you go out as a business owner and you borrow a million dollars, your taxes don't, means nothing. So you may, you pay back a hundred thousand dollars next year. You just had a hundred thousand dollars of income. And a business owner will tell me, I don't have any money, and I'll say, you owe money on the hundred thousand because you had to make the hundred thousand to pay the loan back. And it wasn't income when you got the loan, so you can't take that as a deduction when you pay the loan. See, it's all the working knowledge, and once you get your head wrapped around that, then I think that even though you may never have read these financial statements before, or any of them like that, you can begin to understand where the numbers are going. But it takes time. And it is governmental accounting. Need I say more?
Some of it is for the better and some of it maybe not so much, but.
There's an argument against the pensions and there's an argument for having that pension information that I was discussing early, yeah. Anything else?
That was, that was a good question.
Well, I'd like to take a few minutes, uh, if it's okay.
Take a phone call quick.
Okay. Would you like me to stall?
No, go ahead.
Those are big numbers. We're talking eighteen million, nineteen million revenue expenses, we're talking thirty-five million, we're talking twenty million in pension expenses uh, to the average person, uh, that doesn't deal with a business of that size, doesn't understand those millions of dollars. We try to make sure every year, and if you saw, looked at the, the chart there that showed the, uh, revenue and expense, very tight, uh, balanced budgets, uh, every year for the last five years. And you can go back for the five years before that, and it's very similar. Uh, that's what we try and do during the budgeting process is bring you, as a board, a budget that's going to be balanced. Well, we have to project the revenue, we have to project the expenses. Well, what I like to show you is, I like to show you how that compares to other school districts in, in Minnesota. Not just trying to grasp and get your head around all those numbers, but what does that mean when we're talking about Malacca or Ogilvy or Minneapolis or Edina or whatever? Uh, Schools for Equity and Education, uh, which, uh, Scott and I are going down to a meeting tomorrow, puts out every year an annual ranking, a revenue rankings piece, and takes into account those various sources. Local taxes, uh, state aid, uh, as well as then the federal and the other income that we generate such as gate receipts and that type of stuff. So we get this money then through the revenue projections and we spend that money. You've seen the past couple of months, you've seen what the student achievement is, uh, and how that has advanced and progressed. Uh, you've seen where we're at in a number of other indicators within the district, and we're doing very, very well. Well, how are we doing for bang for the buck is the question then, that comes along with the audit, uh, and the amount of revenue and the expenses we have. So Schools for Equity and Education, and I know you've seen this before, but some of you haven't, they take a look at your general education money, your referendum and location optional revenue, your special education revenue and your facilities money, that LTFM money that just came into play a few years ago. And then they take that and they divide your total district dollars that you get in through your operating revenue by the number of students that you have, and then they come up with a dollar per student. So that you can compare, so that you can't just say, well, uh, this district has a five million dollar budget, this one has an eighteen million dollar budget, this one has a fifty-seven million dollar budget. What does it cost per student to educate them and get them through twelve, thirteen years of kindergarten and school, of the, school time? So, it's gonna be difficult, this is, my paper's wrapping a little bit here. Uh, the board, you've seen this before, so you know where I'm going with this. I'm gonna tip it this way a little bit. So here's the three hundred and thirty school districts in the state of Minnesota, starting with the highest, uh, dollar per student numbers at the top. And those districts are Hendricks, Campbell Tinta, Tri-County, Herman Norcross, Pine Point, South Koochiching, Grigla, Lancaster, and Kitsin Central. The smaller your district, the more per student it generally costs because there's requirements that you have. You have to have a superintendent, you have to have custodians, you have to have all these basic services, you have to have transportation. So these districts up here are spending sixteen thousand dollars or more per student, uh, up here. The next group is at fifteen thousand dollars or more per student. The next group in Minneapolis, I pointed that out because now we're into one of the big districts, uh, is in the fourteen thousand dollar per pupil or more, or more than fourteen thousand. The closest district around here that falls into that bracket is Onamia. Here's Onamia on this list of three hundred and thirty school districts. Here's the thirteen thousand. Here's the twelve thousand. I pointed out St. Cloud is one of the bigger districts in there. Here's Edina. Now we're down below twelve thousand, from eleven to twelve thousand. Here's Edina, here's Pine City, here's Isle, here's Hinkley-Finnelson, here's East Central. Here's Malacca. Here's Ogilvy, North Branch, Elk River, Cambridge Isani, and here's Mora at two hundred and fifty-five. There's two hundred and fifty-four districts out of three hundred and thirty that generate more revenue per pupil that they spend on an annual basis. So bang for the buck, and I think Ethan had put it at one point as in the top ten percent of being in the lowest cost per pupil in the state of Minnesota. So we moved up a little bit, we were at about two hundred and ninetieth previously, we have moved up to two hundred and fifty-fifth. Uh, districts that I pointed out, other local districts here, Bram and Resh City, both just passed an operating referendum that will bring them up next year, up above where Mora is. And so the only one below us then will be Foley on a per pupil basis. So when you take a look at bang for buck, the student achievement that we've been showing, uh, the safety that we've been showing, all of the various, uh, components within the district, technology, transportation, all of those components, we're operating at this level right here on per pupil basis. And so when Carl says this is a well-managed district, I have to agree with it. Now, one of the things that makes it very difficult is there are people out there that say that's not the case. That prior to the, uh, election, there were people out there making misstatements, miscommunications, and I'm gonna say blatant lies. Uh, one of those, uh, was reported to Mr. Jensen by a small business owner here in the community. And so, uh, they showed us of these pieces that Carl's just been talking about, about the audit, they showed this much. They showed just the assets of liquidable assets that the district had at the end of our book closing on June thirtieth, which at that time, at that, on that particular day, that's just one snapshot. But you have to not just take on a balance sheet, not just show your assets, you gotta show the whole page, which also includes your liabilities. So there were people running around saying that, well, they've got seven million dollars in investments that they can spend to fix the buildings, when that's not the case. Those investments are in pots of money that can only be spent for certain things. You get down to, but here on the page, LTFM money, and that's the money that's dedicated for long-term facility maintenance, and we have seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand in there. We also, as Carl had mentioned, have a fund balance that parts or a portion of that is unrestricted and could be spent to fix the buildings. However, it's not anywhere near five million or seven million or ten million or any of those other numbers that these people are going out with, showing this much of the sheet, when this is what it actually makes it up. So I just wanted to point that out for the board members, uh, community members, if you're interested, that have extra sheets like that as well, so that we can put some of these lies, because they're not just mistruths. If somebody only gives you half the information, it's a lie. And they're lying to the people of the community. And I just wanna set the record straight on that.
Thank you, and, um, it, it's a complex thing when it comes to school finance, but it doesn't help when you take a number in isolation and try to use it or spend it to suit a narrative. And so, um, appreciate anybody with questions, always checking for verification. Guess what we're, just reinforcing again is that it's, it's a school district that is about transparency, there are no secrets. It's all public information. Uh, we are subject to an annual audit, we have oversight and, uh, everybody involved is doing their due diligence. And, um, need to thank Mr. Schultz again for the sound management of the past, almost ten years of the, the variance, when you look at eight hundred and one thousand dollars or apply the percentage, whatever you wanna do, it's, it's stellar. And it's year after year and year over year, we just, um, always feel that we are able to count on people that are in positions to do this for us, Craig and Tammy and Carl. Yeah, there's questions, and that's a good thing, but when there are, just get your, get your numbers verified, so. Thank you for presenting that. And that wasn't intended for everybody to be able to read, but it's to show that that is the way the state looks as far as school districts, uh, the number of them in the state and how we compare in place, not, not to read what each line says. Point taken. Any other comments or questions?
Do you need a motion to?
Yeah, we do.
Someone?
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve the twenty seventeen eighteen financial audit, seconded by Tammy. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Just thinking. Thank you, Carl, appreciate it. All right, we will move on then to the consent agenda, are there any requests to remove any items from the consent agenda?
And that's all, this is the, this would be the general fund.
No, just.
Did you have something before?
I just wanted to, you know, to state, and then for the record, when we were talking, or when Craig was saying that, you know, they wanted to show the assets of twelve million six hundred thirty-seven thousand, our unassigned fund balance as of that date that they pulled this was, it was three point four eight seven, which wasn't even the four point five that, they said, that's the overall stuff, but then there's monies restricted within there. That three point four eight seven is that roughly three months worth of expenses to get us through, because we only get paid basically twice a year.
Well, and the other piece to that is that the state doesn't have to pay us.
No, exactly, and they, they have withheld before, and that's why we are very guarded of that number because our expenses don't stop just because the revenue doesn't come in.
What people don't remember is that we, as a district, have had to go to local banks and, and have made loans to pay for peo- for salaries, be, when we weren't in, in this kind of financial position. And then when the state did pay us, they didn't pay us the interest that the banks were charging us. So it's in our best interest to keep a fund balance at twenty percent so that we never get into that position again.
It's us being very fiscally conservative, very fiscally responsible.
Really responsible. And based on what we were shown there, we are efficiently run and, or, uh, very efficiently run operations. Okay. Thank you, Scott, anything else, otherwise we will move on to the consent agenda. And if there are no requests to remove any items, can obtain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Bob, with second by Ethan. And, uh, just one change under personnel items, and it's in your packet for, uh, Lenell Parker's leave of absence request, it is FMLA, it was, that's a change. Also, the effective date is a change, one three nineteen. Acknowledging and accepting gifts and donations, Neighborhood National Bank, a hundred twenty-five dollars for cap. Our education foundation has several there, a hundred dollars, uh, for elementary classroom grant and another hundred dollars for elementary classroom grant, and maybe six dollar one for elementary classroom grants, so appreciate those. And if there is no further discussion on the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, consider approval of transportation request to use four ways instead of eight-way system on right-hand turns. We have some more information, I bet.
We do, actually.
This was tabled from last month.
Actually, the whole situation I'm happy to report has kind of resolved itself.
Do you wanna share, please?
I will, I'm glad to share. So, um, after many, um, emails back from the board with the kind of rule, I was kind of enlightened on some of, I'm like, oh, all right. So, um, if you are in a turn lane with your four ways or your eight ways on, um, after you make that stop, by law, you have to turn right. So, why would we even do a turn, a stop in a turn lane? Why would we even do that? So after Chip and I, um, discussing it and looking at it and trying to figure it out, we were able to change some things and we don't have to do those anymore. So I, it kind of resolved itself in comparison, so, um, I don't need an approval.
Okay.
Perfect.
Perfect. So we don't need to act on anything.
You do not need to act on anything.
Right into right-hand turns.
Um, it kind of like, I don't like it, just kind of like, it fixed itself.
Makes sense, huh?
Easiest piece of pie that I ever had to eat, so.
Okay, I wasn't aware, I didn't, I mean, maybe I should, missed the communication where we could delete that item from the agenda, but in this case then, we will do it now.
Yep.
Or we, we will not need action on that, so.
But Bob, for your question, you asked about how if you're in the right-hand turn with your eight ways on, if traffic does have to stop? Absolutely, if there's three lanes of traffic, you have to stop. The only way you do not have to stop is if it's divided. The only way you do not have to stop is if it's a divided highway.
Sure.
And you're on the opposite side.
Yeah.
Yes. A divided highway, say if I'm going northbound and I'm in the turn lane with my eight-way system on and there's somebody in going, did I say northbound? I'm going, I'm going northbound, they're heading southbound. They don't have to stop because it's a divided highway. Everybody on your side does have to stop by law.
All right.
So.
Thank you.
But I made sure I found that one out. There were a lot of different emails, he was very knowledgeable, and I was like, oh, well, that totally makes sense. Why didn't I like think of that, so.
Thank you.
I learned something.
Perfect.
And thank you for that. So we will move on then to the next item, which is consider approval of the Education Minnesota More Certified Seniority List as of six thirty eighteen. And we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Ethan, second by Tammy. Discussion? Not all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right, consider approval of updates to superintendent's contract as recommended by the School Board Executive Committee. Would you like to make a motion so we can discuss?
I'll make a move.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Ethan, second by Scott. Discussion? Um, we met an executive committee and Scott or Ethan, do you wanna share? Any results of that?
Yeah, no, me either, I was just continuing saying, uh.
Should I give you a summary?
Yeah, thank you.
I, I have a question. It was three different items. An increase in contribution to four oh three B. And buyback of sick leave, accrued sick leave time. And then a bonus for construction projects of over a certain dollar amount. Felt that Craig, having gone through the last, however, long with the construction project, then was in line for a bonus, so to speak. Compensation for the time and the dollar amount, I think that we used was fifteen million dollars or more in a construction project. Well, we'll stick to that. And as a board, we're all aware of the amount of time that was consumed by that or that fell on Craig over the course of the building of the facilities of the trail.
Also took into consideration neighboring districts and where those superintendents are compensated. We had pulled together good information there.
So.
And some of the base language for the items came from the administrative contract that was negotiated after my contract was negotiated as well. It's reflective of that as well.
Is it fifteen million in theirs too?
I believe theirs might have, was it fifteen or ten?
Was it fifty?
Fifteen?
Ten, I thought, that's what's.
I think it's ten in theirs, I put fifteen in, in the superintendent's contract.
And the contribution for the something oh three or, thank you, is, was kind of about the same.
Similar to what the other superintendents in the area are at.
Not your current administration? Would it be okay for us to know those numbers?
Sure. Four oh three BP's was at three thousand and went to five thousand per year.
Sick leave buyback was two, how many days?
That's at, that's at retirement, if over fi- ten years service in the district.
All of it buyback or percentage?
All.
And that was all consistent with our surrounding? The same, how do I word this?
Comparable.
Comparable to the same ones that we compar-
That we compare ourselves to?
Compare the teachers to and the administration.
Districts of like size in central Minnesota.
Okay. Just needed to know.
Anything else?
I think I'm okay.
All right. Ready to vote? We have a motion in a second, so if there is no further discussion, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we have first reading of policies, you see there under item twelve. So that is for information tonight, we'll be acting on those in future meeting, first reading tonight. Next is the following policies are recommended for annual review, required review with no changes. We are pulling number eight oh six, that one is going to be reworked. There is some language in there that it's not consistent, the policy isn't consistent with what the current language is. So anyway, it, we will pull that one for tonight. But if we could make a motion to approve all of the rest, four ten, five fourteen.
I'll make a motion to approve all but eight oh six.
Thank you. Motion by Bob Woods, second by Ethan, any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. So we have board reports, any board members?
More Education Foundation met and wants the, the group, the district to know that there are funds available for grants. Looking for innovative, creative things, so please continue to spread the word on that. There, we passed three in this last meeting. One for the, the RAC, which was, which was kind of exciting to do, so. But please spread the word out there that, that organization really wants to, to give back and, and is excited to do so. Wants some innovative and exciting things to, to contribute to. It's a fun group to be a part of. It's, it's, it's fun to see people bring their passions and.
You've been on for a while, so thank you for your time.
It's been since I think two thousand nine. I was president for a while. That was a long time ago.
I have a question for MEF.
Yeah.
You'll take donations from anybody at any time, right?
Yes.
I have a class reunion coming up and there's an organization of some people that wanna do a class fundraiser. Great ask, where it should go, and I named a couple of different.
Do you need way to do it? You can, you can do it to increase the, the fund that we draw the interest off to give off. Or you can just donate it to the, to the general scholarship.
The grant fund, I guess.
You know, grant fund.
Um, also, the meet and confer committee of the board met with teachers that requested, um, right, meet and confer. So we did that.
That just happened, just five seconds ago?
A meeting?
No, no, I mean, the, the, we just did the contract.
Oh, this is just, meet and confer is a conversation.
Okay.
It, it, it's set up, it's a legislative thing.
It's, it's in statute, state statute.
I wish that that was just before then the contract negotiations.
No, no, it says actually nothing to do with, um, contract negotiations. But we just don't always have meet and confer. But it's an opportunity to basically sit down and dialogue, uh, committee of the board with teachers, so. And they bring topics, we've got an agenda based on topics that everyone submitted to talk about. And so we did that, I think it was within the last month, wasn't it? It was since the October board meeting, so many things.
Can't remember the date. I know, and I'm blanking on the third topic, I just dotted them down, on what we discussed for the implementation, implementation of technology. As new things come down the pike. This year it was, um, it was the, um, the TV's, the touch, what, whatever.
Clever touch.
Clever touch, thank you. Yeah, I've done that too. But other, other technology related issues that impact teachers' life or we just, we just talked about the changes that could be made there or how things could be improved upon as far as implementation and application. The condition of the buildings as far as cleanliness came on. And then what was the third?
Elementary behaviors.
Behaviors in elementary, so. So it was a dialogue among all of us.
Anything the board has to, to, should take action or?
I think everything that was discussed, we felt could be dealt with by directing it to the proper administration or individual or, I don't know, Craig, what, is that the?
Some of the, some of the things also are covered by due process and some of the frustration with elementary behaviors that are out of the functional realm, but those students also have rights that have to be protected. So there's some frustration with that. And so, um, meet and confer is set up by the legislature to meet up, and I think it's up to four times a year, is it Jackie? And use our professional staff to help solve problems. And so it's kind of a problem solving piece. And so we can listen to their frustrations, they can listen to some of our frustrations or limitations. And then we can try and work together to come up with solutions to make the district better. So that, that's basically what it's about and what it's for.
It's a good dialogue to have.
And the executive committee, is that, does that?
No, it's a standing committee that we appoint each organizational meetings, so that.
Yeah, if you're interested.
I like talking.
No, it's, it's Tammy, Ethan and me that are currently making up the meeting.
And Mr. Schultz, I just want to say thank you for addressing that in your weekly, in your weekly correspondence to us. You talked about the issues.
So, um, any other board meetings?
There was a board advisory meeting, uh, Tammy and I were attendants on the twelfth. And there they talked about the survey that's going out from the communications committee.
Renovation application piece.
Thank you. And then we also talked about the election results. Also, Mr. Nelson gave a report on the task force renovating. And he spent close to fifty minutes on that topic and all the discussion during that topic, which I'm sure we will hear from him sooner or later on that. What else was there, Tammy?
I was about it. I mean, yeah.
We went to well after one by Mr. Nelson, so. And thanks, and thanks, that's good, that's good. Then we have three new board members on the advisory board, members sitting in the back row, so thanks for attending.
Thanks for stepping up and for attending and, yeah. And this is something that more people think would love to be involved with if they knew. So spread the word, all, all they need to do is connect with Paula, Chris and the district office and we will give them details. There are so many a year, it's not monthly, but what is it average? About six meetings, five a year? So not a huge amount of time and besides you get lunch.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's at noon, they feed you lunch.
And thank you.
That's an opportunity to share information from the school district to the community, as well as the community to share their perspective so that we can relate that information to the board as we move forward in all of our various aspects, from technology to transportation to facilities to finances to student achievement. So do appreciate your contributions.
Yes, thank you. All right, any other board meeting or board member meeting, so then I will move on. Student board member, Molly.
So, I think last time I was here, it was the day before the Halloween five K, if I remember correctly. And it went fairly well considering it was not the best weather again. We had the rainy, dreary cold, but a lot of people came out and seemed to have a really good time. We basically broke even, but it was really fun, so I think everyone involved had a lot of fun with it. And again, thank you to Nancy for being there and helping us keep everyone safe. We had the blood drive last week and the goal, the juniors is, are the students who set this whole thing and run this whole thing. They, their goal is fifty-three units and they got fifty-four units, so they did meet their goal. And we had thirty-two first time donors. So it was a really successful day. I went after school and everything was running smoothly and they had every, everyone had a different job. And it was just, they did a really, really good job running it, so.
You must have done an amazing job of recruiting. Or did you have thirty-some people step up and just decided going to donate blood?
Well, we, they were a lot, there were a lot of emails sent out and a lot of posters and lots of reminders. And there, there was just, they would ask people and just say, hey, there's a blood drive Friday, wanna donate? We have pizza, so.
The free food.
Yep, it was the free food. Coming up, we're looking at the holiday drive, which is gonna be November twenty-sixth through December seventh, where we're gonna collect money and food to give around the holiday time. And it's gonna be a contest between the grades and whoever win will get a movie in the auditorium, just for a reward. It's gonna be a one-to-one point system, so a dollar equals one point, one food item equals a point. And we have six teachers, one from each grade lined up to collect everything and keep track of everything. And then student council at the end will go through and buy the toys and deliver food. And we will take care of everything after, on December seventh. And then the only other thing we're looking at right now is winter formal. We started brainstorming ideas last meeting and have a few themes to choose from. And we're gonna put, we're trying to put snow week the week before formal. So instead of having formal and then snow week a different week, we're gonna have it all one week to just kind of lead up to the big event, so. And then not student council related, I just wanted to say how great it was coming back to school after having surgery. And like the Ms. Brown over there, she did an awesome job. And all my teachers were super supportive and like very, very lenient and helping me catch up on assignments, especially in my college classes. And they just, um, very good job and very thankful for everyone that helped out. And for the other seniors that have had surgery the past couple of weeks, they've said the same thing to me, that everyone has just been so incredibly helpful for everything, so.
You missed how many days?
I missed three full days and then I missed three half days.
Drew missed one day yesterday, he was feeling stressed out today in college classes.
I'll help him out.
All right, thank you, Molly. Okay, we'll move on to buildings, grounds, transportation, Mr. Grant.
Nothing much has changed since we were last here, except for the weather. So we've been busy outside getting things put away. We did have a contractor switch out our, uh, back parking lots, LED to LED. If you get a chance when you come to a big basketball game this winter, um, here at the high school, it's so much brighter back there, it's amazing. And we also had to order, we're gonna upgrade the parking lot lights in the student lot as well, it's kind of dim and stuff up there, so. Busy converting the, the old varsity softball field into a baseball field. So contractor was up scraping and we held it a lot, some lots of egg line Tuesday. And I actually have to bring more tomorrow, so before it gets cold, we're gonna get that shaped up. And then we did get that, that sink finally ordered, there were some, it's custom made, so they wanted to make sure what they sent us, we can't get back. So we had to double and triple our measurements, but that's been ordered for the concession stand at the wellness center. So we'll get that put in when that comes. Transportation, we did our mandatory bus evacuations on the twenty-fourth. We only have to do that once per year now, so we are, we were spent and that went extremely well. The parking lot there is, is a perfect spot to do that. Kids get out and the, the drivers did a great job explaining what happens and what we need to do. And the older kids help the younger ones off the back of the bus, et cetera, went really well. And I still have not heard yet on that bus grant that we talked about last month, it said early November grant. So I'll let you know in my weeklies if I get information. You have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. All right, activities, community ed update. You may miss me, Chris, so her report is in your packet, if you have any questions. Alright, activities, community ed update, you may miss me, Chris, so her report is in your pocket, if you have any questions, you can direct them to her. Unless Craig had anything further, if not, we'll move on to principals.
Uh, just uh, one thing I didn't see previously, uh, we did purchase a concession uh, trailer uh, to utilize uh, one of the issues that we had uh, uh, for the football uh, here is, is that there's no water back there, so all we can sell is prepackaged and bottled uh, drinks. And so, we looked at running uh, water back there and it was too cost prohibitive, and so we've been talking about this for five or six years now, uh, that we were looking for a concession trailer. And uh, Chris Osterdike and Barb Frederickson found one that they felt would work, uh, it's a used one, uh, and uh, it's coming from another school district. And so, our shop guys back there are gonna take the stickers off, uh, so we can uh, decorate it up as a more Mustang concession stand that we can use then uh, up at the baseball fields, the softball fields, the track, uh, the football field here, and uh, so I think it'll be a very good investment for us.
Thank you. Alright, so we will move to high school principals report.
Alright, you have the high school report in front of you, um, if you have any questions on any of it, let Mr. Bakke and myself know. I just wanna point out the very bottom one, the pledge of allegiance. This, about two months ago, one of our staff members came to me and she said, Brent, I feel like some of our students aren't sincere when they say the pledge. Um, so we did some brainstorming as a staff and we came up with an idea, and I think it's been going alright, um, be curious to know what what you think, but what we did is we, Grace Kubisch collected a bunch of information on past students, uh, relatives of students and relatives of staff, finding out who are our active uh, duty servicemen and women, and every Monday now, before we recite the pledge, I go on the intercom and I let everyone know, here's somebody, here's their rank, here's where they're stationed, uh, kind of making it real, so they think about that and then we go into the pledge. The feedback I've heard so far has been pretty positive, or what do you think?
I think it's really heartfelt to start on Monday morning and um, like my class immediately is quiet and listens and does the pledge and it's, it's really nice and really interesting to to hear um, people that we've known and some people know that they're part of the military and they need to find out that older classmates have joined, it's, I like, really like it.
So, we have relatives that a lot of people know about, so it's brought some awareness and more respect.
Um, I'll start with something, um, we accidentally missed the second page of our student package. So, that's alright, we go, so I'll I'll tell you what was on there, um, so we had our reading night, which was October twenty-ninth. Uh, we had seven hundred and, or, seven hundred, I was, three hundred and seventy-three people came through the front door, so it was, it was a big showing, it was a lot of fun. Uh, free pizza dinner for everybody, um, I, we just wanted to take it back and to thank um, Tom Wetter, the horse man, um, insurance representative. He donated four bikes for our getaway, two primary smaller bikes and then two big bikes, and we had them in the lunchroom all week and the kids were just so excited for him, and so um, we were able to give those away and it was very exciting. Um, in addition, he worked the um, booth with me all night long, like literally was taking tickets and um, so uh, he was there and active too, so I just really appreciated his involvement with that. Um, and then just a thank you to uh, Darren Lucanville and Kathy um, for putting in all the time they do to make that reading night successful. And then they pull in all the other staff and it's really a fun night and um, the staff at the end, we all sit down and eat dan- eat the leftover pizza together and so, it's just a lot of fun.
It is a good night, it's 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 a lot of fun, I wish um, my daughter and I could have stayed longer, but um, high school winter sports meeting was that night as well, so maybe in the future, if we could just communicate a little bit better, because being in two places at once, at least I don't have to be in three places at once anymore, that was a real struggle. But, but um, no, it was a great night, it's always so much fun and it's um, it's exciting to watch the kids um, to watch the kids get so excited about reading and, oh my goodness, I have my own book, like I get to pick out what book I want and and the arts and the crafts and the games and things like that, it's just a good way for the community to come together with our littles and then actually get to know some staff members while you're there.
And as the last component, it is, it is a part of our Title One application.
Yep.
Um, to do some kind of public um, teaching of our program, so uh, Mr. Lucanville does do the presentation and then that fulfills that part of that component of Title One too, so, that helps too.
And speaking of being in two places at one time, we have conferences going right now at the elementary. It looked like they had a good turnout, uh, band and choir concerts were uh, Tuesday this week and Thursday last week. We had a uh, very positive bathroom day program, thank you Mr. Schultz for your welcome speech, and Steve Ekholm did a great job as well entertaining the kids and had a powerful, powerful, energetic, uh, ten to fifteen minutes of of a great message, so. We had about, we had two hundred chairs, that's why I would guess that we had about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy community members in attendance.
It's a good program, alright. Okay, we'll move on into superintendent's update.
Um, just a couple of things I wanna bring you up to speed on, and that is the closing date uh, for the Fairview property uh, has been moved from November twenty-ninth to December tenth, uh, and that has to do with the uh, way the uh, the timing of the city council meetings uh, such that they will have all these, should have all the approvals uh, for all of the various components for their um, structural piece. Uh, we have just a couple of final details that we're taking care of, uh, that have been requested, when I say we, I mean Tammy and I, uh, and so that's been moved to December tenth. And uh, the closer that gets, the more exciting it gets, uh, because I really didn't think we were ever gonna sell that property and uh, to actually bring it through to fruition here, uh, is gonna be fantastic. Um, as far as the other piece of property uh, that goes over with the uh, transportation garage, that, I don't know if that's ever gonna happen. They keep requesting things from us that they're supposed to provide, and so uh, you know, the, the way that it was done with QuickTrip was very laid out and very precise and uh, is going through the process and uh, the one with this Dollar General thing is just, I don't know where we're at, to tell you the truth, so, I don't know if that'll ever happen. Uh, another thing that comes up this time of the year, and I just wanna remind everybody uh, here, uh, whether you're a school district member or not, uh, this just recently happened to a family member of mine as well, uh, there's these fishing scams that come out uh, about this time of year, and people are looking for money. And uh, we had one of our board members uh, this past week, uh, that was contacted uh, suppo- supposedly by another board member uh, asking her to purchase some iTunes gift cards or something, so uh, please beware uh, that those are out there. Uh, immediately uh, contacted Shane and uh, our tech director, and he said, yep, uh, it happened about this time last year, so within an hour uh, after I was notified, he had that email out to all staff, uh, as well, I think he put out another one, uh, something today about Mr. Nelson. So, I don't know if that was a made up one or if uh, you were actually contacted, I haven't. Uh, but it uh, will, actually, it'll look real, uh, look very real until you look at the actual address, the return address, and uh, it's not the the Brenton, the B Nelson at Moorea Schools, it's something else, so, just beware of those, uh, there are a lot of people that uh, do fall into that, as I said, uh, one of my family members did here just in the past month, so.
Plus, they're usually quoting, really important.
It definitely did not sound like you, I ran for it, it's not Karen.
I don't know if you remember, but uh, I think it was two years ago, uh, that they hacked my account at school, and they not only had my account and they contacted Tammy and uh, they said something about, I think they said, Tamra, are you available today to make that wire transfer? And she contacted me and said, you'd never call me Tammy, what's the deal here? Well, I was out of town the day before that and my credit card shut down, my school district credit card shut down, and the reason it didn't work down there and when I came back and talked to Tammy was, at the same time I was trying to use it, there was what, two, three hundred dollar uh, charges in Omaha, Nebraska at the same time I was trying to use it here in Minneapolis, so, uh, that stuff does happen, uh, people do access, they do fish, uh, and uh, they do hit the jackpot sometimes, so. Just be aware of that, uh, so that if anything comes up, that you don't lose some money on that.
I got you, every time.
Alright. Thanks Craig. Okay, dates are there, uh, again, our regular meeting in December will be early because of the holidays, so um, December twentieth preceded, well, sorry, not preceded, truth and taxation is part of the regular meeting in December, so we'll have truth and taxation hearing also as part of that meeting, but uh, mark your calendars, everybody, December twentieth, which is a week earlier than we normally meet. Um, respondents is coming around or is, has gone around?
Yeah.
Brings us to other board business, is there any other board business? Second open forum. Any like to address the board or make public comment at this time? Alright, if not, uh, we are going to be moving into closed session for the purpose of going over the superintendent's evaluation, which we hope are are in the process of completing. So, um, need a motion to do that, uh, first of all, I'd like to, yeah, thank everybody for being here tonight, and um, we will see you in December, that's great. Um, tell people that there is some good information here, and also now they will have the opportunity to uh, hopefully watch our meetings as we work out the kinks and um, so that will be um, posted on the website, is that correct?
I'm not exactly sure yet, we're still working on that, there'll be, it'll probably be on YouTube, uh, with a link on the website.
Okay. YouTube. We're gonna put a link on the website, right? Okay. It's a work in progress, but it's coming and.
The audio is still available on the website.
The audio is currently on the website. Thank you, everybody, and with that, uh, we need a motion to.
Make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.